I do know that.
I got it.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Let me call this October 11th, 2018 Business Meeting with the Clackamas County Commission to Order. And would you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I know that was a little out of order, but I just think we ought to do that first instead of second.
It's always good to mix it up a bit.
I'm so confused.
So I'll go ahead and proceed with the roll call. First, I want to introduce Mr. Nate Boderman, representing County Council this morning, and Mr. Kevin Moss, serving as your clerk to the board. And so I'll start with Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Humberston.
Here.
I would like to announce the board will recess the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority Board for the next item. And to my far left is Housing Authority Commissioner Paul Reynolds. Would clerk please read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On today's consent agenda, we have approval of the acquisition of approximately 3.4 acres at 13907 through 13957 South Holcomb Boulevard, Oregon City, to increase the number of affordable housing units to be created under the Clackamas Heights Redevelopment Plan. And this also includes approval of Resolution Number 1933 and options agreement.
Thank you. Do the commissioners wish to remove any items? Or do you have any questions about the items? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Is there a... It has been moved and seconded to approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
And to the other Paul. The board will adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. And the next item on our agenda is citizen communication. The first person we have today is our county clerk, Sherri Hall.
Do I do anything to this? Is it on? Okay. Okay, well, Election Day is 26 days away, so I wanted to give you some information as we go forward. The last day to register as a brand-new Oregon voter will be Tuesday of next week, in order to vote in the November election. So that means 5:00 in our office with paper registration, or you can register online up through midnight that day. The voters' pamphlets are printed, and they will be out. And commissioners, I just put five in your office, in case you want one today. And there's a kind of new thing this year that is going to be very handy for everyone. On page C84 is the list of ballot outdoor drop boxes, and they're all outdoors now. There's nothing in a building. And on the page that directs you to where they are, there's a QR code. You can scan that with your phone, and it will bring up a Google map that populates where all of the boxes are, so it's going to be easy to find them. And the boxes with asterisks are drive-up boxes, so for anyone who doesn't want to get out of their car and walk to the box, go to the ones with the asterisks. That's closest to your neighborhood.
That's great.
The ballots drop next Wednesday. That's October 17th, and the number dropping will be 285,817 ballots. If you don't have your ballot by Friday, call our office, and we'll see why you didn't get one, and we can send one to you, or you can pick one up if you're eligible. Supplemental mailings will go out after the bulk mailing, because we get daily registrations. And so up until the Thursday before Election Day, we will be sending supplemental batches of ballots out, so that everyone who's eligible can vote. The ballot returns on our website, if you've used that before. That will go up on Monday, October 22nd, and you can check daily to see how many have been returned. And also, the number of ballots mailed out will change because of our supplementals as we go through. Is there any questions?
I just have one. All of what you just said, is that online under the clerk's office?
Yes, the deadlines, and the, like, October 16th deadline, and the days that voters' pamphlets go out, which they went to the post office yesterday, so you should be getting them at home, and then ballots. But the supplementals will add to the number of total ballots mailed out. So on the 22nd, I don't think it's on our website that that's going up on the 22nd, but you can find it on our website on Monday, the 22nd. That's when the template will be there with all the numbers.
Okay.
Okay?
Any other questions?
Just a comment. Might be a good idea, I just looked at our landing page on the website, of course, I'm looking at my iPhone, so I'm not sure it's the main one, still modified version, but might be a good idea to have the voter registration on the main page, on the landing page for the county, so people know the last day to register is, we said, the 19th?
No, the 16th, and that is on the website.
It's on your website, but it should be on the landing page of the county website.
You want to have it on the county homepage.
Might be a good idea, knowing that there's a limited time, so people can find it quickly.
That's really close. And if anyone's moved, or you don't want to change anything on their registration, we can do all of those up through 8:00 election night. So like, if you haven't changed your registration, and you didn't get your ballot, we can update your address, and registered voters that are already on the list can do anything up through 8:00 election night.
I think it's also to point out that most everyone can register online.
That's correct. www.OregonVotes.com.
So it's easy.
Yes. Actually, .gov. Yes. Okay.
One other question. I'm just curious, given that this is a non-presidential year, we have 285,000 ballots that are going to hit the mailboxes. About what percentage do you... What's the range of return that you expect, given this type of election?
Everybody, of course, is talking about really getting out there to vote. I mean, everywhere you go, you've got that message. I'll just give you, the May primary, we sent out around 281,000 registered voter ballots. We got 81,000 returned, which is less than 30%. That's very, very sad. But from just being in the office, and the customers at the counter, or the citizens, the voters at the counter, we've had a lot of people getting early ballots, because we have snowbirds, and they leave for the winter. And so the ballots have been available to pick up in our office for a couple of weeks, and we have a lot of people doing that. So maybe that's an indication of a higher return. In the past, governor races have been about 60% return, which is what this one is. Presidential has been about 85. But because of all the talk about it on TV and everywhere, it's possible we'll get a higher return. And these elections cost a lot of money. I mean, May was 250-some thousand. So if we want to get best bang for our buck, voters need to vote.
Voters need to vote. And that 60%, is that statewide, or Clackamas County? Or are we pretty similar to the state in Clackamas County?
We're pretty similar to the state, but it hasn't been that high for a while. And, you know, it's one thing to get people registered, but you also need to say, you know, there's a second step here. When you get that ballot, turn it in. Because there has been times, like, I think it was 2008, when Obama first ran, everybody was getting 20- to 35-year-olds registered, but they didn't send the ballots in. So that's the final step that's really important. That's your voice to government, right?
I think for some people, especially younger people, they don't know how to vote on something. And I think a lot of people think they need to fill out and vote on every... They can just leave that blank if they don't know how to vote, and vote on what's important to them. So that might be a good message for some people, to realize that they can, again, just vote on what they know something about, and if they uneasy or don't know, they can just leave that blank and move on.
Right. We don't want guessing. You need to be comfortable with how you would vote on issues. If you're not sure of what you want to do, or if you don't understand it, you can leave it blank. Presidential especially, there's many ballots that come in with only the presidential choice marked. And there's several ballot measures. We have two county seats, all the state rep and senator seats. It's very important to study. You can read the voters' pamphlet. You can call our office if you want to contact a candidate or a person to do with a measure, and we have that contact information that we'll give out. And in fact, the filing forms are online, too, and that information is on there. That's on our website.
As we get closer, I think we all probably be encouraging people up here on the dais to vote as we get closer and closer to Election Day.
I think we've all been doing that, right?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Next person we have today is Mr. Les Poole.
Good morning, Les Poole. I'm here almost every week. I want to thank Sherri for that report and all the information. And if you can't figure out where to vote, her office is down the street. There's a drive-up box there. So if you can find this place, you can probably find the Elections Division. And hopefully, we do get a good turnout. A couple of things. One is, I've got concerns about the measure that's on the ballot, Metro's housing measure, And a lot of my concerns were on display in the Pamplin media op-ed this week. It's not that I'm opposed to bonding money for affordable housing. It's that I'm really, really troubled by how Metro's gone about this, and the investment that Metro intends to make in housing itself. We can call them joint ventures, which they are, but Metro doesn't have the best track record in its initial mission. I think we can all agree on that. I'm not the only people saying it, but it's pretty obvious. It's pretty obvious. So I know some of you are bored when I come in and pontificate, but I'm pontificating on behalf of what I believe to be the majority of the citizens in the county. That's why I come down here. If I didn't think I was speaking for a good chunk of the people, I wouldn't show up. So I have my doubts about Metro getting involved in the affordable housing issue. I believe absolutely there needs to be a solution. I don't see this as it. And the letter that was put out and signed by nine mayors doesn't really address anything about the issue. It's a nice vanilla endorsement that says, yeah, we should do something, and by God, we should. But I don't see quite the rosy outcome and return on investment that were promised. And I do notice that the median value for homes on this is 250,000. And I would hope that we'd find out, what is the average home value in Clackamas County? So what would it cost per year for 26199? Speaking of politics, I'll conclude, because I really don't want to get into a long political discussion, and I wouldn't be expected to be allowed to go on. There's a bizarre commercial attacking Julie Parrish. For some reason, Julie's a target. And it's on TV, and I've seen it a couple times, and one of the ladies is from West Lynn. I recognize her as one of those who was here defending the chair when he previously attacked Julie. And certainly, the ad on TV is not the kind of attack that the chair made on Julie, but the point I'm trying to make is real simple. We need some leadership. We need answers, and we need accountability, and it doesn't matter what party you belong to, or what your philosophy is. And those that are probably the least inclined to be part of the problem are the ones that tend to be attacked the most. We need leadership. And attack ads and kowtowing to Metro is not leadership. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Les. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing. It is an approval of a resolution adopting changed fees for Clackamas County Community Corrections for fiscal year 2018-2019. Mr. Boderman.
Good morning. Thank you, commissioners. Nate Boderman, Assistant County Counsel. The item for you this morning is to revise certain fees charged by Community Corrections. Because fees are a part of our code, that's why we're having a public hearing this morning, because it requires a change to that code. Most of the changes are to remove fees that are no longer charged by Community Corrections. The one that you'll see is a supervision fee that is being increased pursuant to state statute. The red lines have been provided in your packet along with the resolution materials. Usually, fees are brought to you in one package at the beginning of the fiscal year. This was omitted, and so that's why this is being picked up at this point. But again, we usually take care of these fees all in one shot. This is just lagging behind just a bit. So with that, if you have any questions, happy to field those.
Thank you, Mr. Boderman. Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Boderman?
Nope.
Hearing none, I'd open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion, please.
I move we approve the resolution adopting changed fees for Clackamas County Community Corrections for fiscal year 2018-2019.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the resolution adopting changed fees for Clackamas County Community Corrections for fiscal year 2018-2019. Is there any other comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a second reading and adoption of ordinance number 08-2018, amending Chapter 703 of the Clackamas County Code relating to gates within the public right-of-way. Mr. Boderman?
Thank you. Again, this item is a second reading of an ordinance to amend the code related to gates within the public right-of-way. So these are obstructions, restrictions on access to public roads. And so we're not talking about private roads here. These are roads that are open to the public. We had a policy session with you two months ago, first reading last month, and so exhaustive summary probably isn't necessary here. I will point out the two items, or the two procedures, really, that are being... are up for proposed change is, first, that whenever someone is applying to put a gate on public right-of-way, 100% of those property owners that are affected by that gate are to sign a consent before that application is submitted. So that's in addition to the code. There is a proposed removal of a provision in the code which would... Well, let me back up. Currently, the board is supposed to be reviewing these gate permits every five years. That doesn't happen, and it probably isn't necessary. It's probably overkill. And so what staff is proposing is to remove that requirement that these are reviewed every five years, and instead, to bring a review before the board whenever there is a change on the ground that would really affect what would happen with those gates. So that's the proposed change. Again, two relatively minor changes to the code. The red lines have been included in your materials, and again, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So do the commissioners have any clarifying questions of the presenter? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this issue. Mr. Les Poole, please identify yourself.
Hi, Les Poole again. You know this is why I came. I've been involved in a lot of land use, and have property and private gates and things. And I just want to reinforce that this is a good idea, and providing clarity, and tidying this up, I'm all for. And I can see, I look back at my experiences, and I can see where this could have circumvented some issues or confusion. So kudos for this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move we read the ordinance by title only?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to read the ordinance by title only. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The clerk would please read the motion by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is ordinance number 08-2018, and ordinance amending Chapter 7.03 of the Clackamas County Code pertaining to gates within the public right-of-way.
And I would ask for a motion.
I move we adopt ordinance number 08-2018, amending Chapter 7.03 of the Clackamas County Code relating to gates within the public right-of-way.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 08-2018, amending Chapter 703 of the Clackamas County Code relating to gates within the public right-of-way. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Would clerk please read the consent agenda today?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. On today's consent agenda, under Health, Housing and Human Services, we have approval of an intergovernmental agreement, DCHS/IGA/E/10145/2019, with Moatloma County Department of Human Services Aging and Disability Services Division; approval of a subrecipient professional service agreement with Cascade AIDS Project for HIV testing and counseling services; under the Department of Transportation Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement for right-of-way services with Oregon Department of Transportation for the Jennings Avenue, Oregon 99E to Oakfield Road project; approval to apply and letter of support for safe routes to school infrastructure grants for sidewalk and crossing improvements; approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Metro to implement the fiscal year 1819 Annual Waste Reduction and Recycle at Work Program; approval of a contract with Groundwater Solutions, Inc., doing business as GSI Water Solutions for peer review of hydrological reports; under our Finance Department, approval of a resolution for Clackamas County supplemental budget, less than 10% for fiscal year 2018-2019; approval of a resolution for Clackamas County for budgeting of new specific purpose revenue for fiscal year 2018-2019; and approval of a resolution for Clackamas County for transfer of appropriations for fiscal year 2018-2019; under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes, Community Corrections, approval of grant award 218 ARBX K023 with U.S. Department of Justice to establish alternatives to incarceration for individuals with opioid use disorders. Thank you, Garrett, for the assistance. Under Business and Community Services, approval of amendment to Schedule B of the existing intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Business and Community Services and Northwest Economic Research Center at Portland State University; approval of a local government grant, number LG18007, Metzler Park Campground Restroom Replacement from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department; approval of an information sharing agreement regarding the local workforce system, and approval of a resolution appointing Clackamas County Commission Chair as chief elected official for purposes of the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act; under Technology Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County for the provision of data transport and fiber resources; under Public and Government Affairs, approval of a board order for extension of cable television franchise with Comcast of Oregon II, Comcast of Twelton Valley, Inc., and Comcast of Illinois Ohio Oregon LLC; approval of a board order for extension of cable television franchise with Canby Telephone Association, doing business as Canby Telecom; and finally, under Water and Environment Services, approval of a joint funding agreement between Water and Environment Services and the U.S. Geological Survey for Johnson Creek Monitoring; and approval of joint funding agreement between Water and Environment Services and U.S. Geological Survey for Twelton River Monitoring.
Thank you. Do the commissioners wish to remove or pull any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? I will second.
Okay, you can say that.
On behalf of the board, I will second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the county administrator update. Mr. Crupp.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got several items to share with you. The first is, our Water and Environment Services Department has recently signed a loan agreement with the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality for their revolving fund, so we can borrow funds to finance our digester project. I'm happy to say that we have been able to accomplish putting together a 20-year loan at an interest rate of 2.14%, and we may be able to reduce that to as low as 1% through what is called the DEQ sponsorship program if we identify an appropriate surface water project and enter into what would be a companion agreement. And I just wanted to thank our Water and Environment Services staff for the great job they're doing, paying close attention to how we use the revenues we get from customer rates. We want to make sure our rates stay as low as possible, and this is one way of achieving that.
Have they identified a project for that?
Not that I know of yet, yeah.
If we can save a point and a half over that period of time with that kind of money...
It's worth looking for.
Definitely worth looking for.
Absolutely. Then, our Transportation Maintenance Division, you know, they've been pretty busy over the drier spring and summer months, very productive, thanks to what were favorable weather conditions over the course of the past several months, from June through September. We were able to pave some 20 miles of roadway in the unincorporated areas around Canby, Malala, and Oregon City. We've repaired several bridges, and striped more than 1,500 miles of yellow centerline and white fog lines, as well as much more. And I just wanted to extend a thank you to our hard-working staff in our Transportation Maintenance Division, in our Transportation and Development Department. And then finally, as you know, our Health, Housing and Human Services Department spearheaded the county's involvement in sponsoring the inaugural El Grito, Oregon Festival at the Clackamas County Fairgrounds in Canby last month, with the goal of engaging diverse communities in the county. We funded the main stage, where all of the musical acts and entertainers performed during this two-day festival. Event organizers say that more than 10,000 people participated and recognized Clackamas County's support and commitment to the community due to the work of our professional staff, who engaged in both English and Spanish with festivalgoers. And I just, again, wanted to thank our outstanding Health, Housing and Human Services folks for the fine job they've done working with the community. And that's it.
And I can tell you, there was some really good Mexican food there. All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner Crupp. The next item on our agenda is Commissioner Communication, Mr. Savis.
Yeah, well, last week, we talked... I spoke a little bit about housing, and I know that's been a lot of conversation even yesterday morning at the Clackamas County Business Alliance, tail end of the meeting about housing. I will say that I'm hoping, and I want to message to the administrator this morning, that under issues, I'd like to bring back, because two weeks ago, we asked Rich Swift, the department head of H3S, to circle back with us, you know, by the... I think he said the middle of October, which is, which will be next week. But hopefully, we can get some answers to some of those housing questions, or the unknowns that we discussed on Tuesday, or two Tuesdays ago, and make sure that we hopefully have some clarity. Because I want to be able to, you know, speak and answer those questions when I have... I'm posed with that, and I was posed with those questions yesterday. And I had, again, say, I don't have a clear answer. And I think that we need to have those clear answers as soon as possible, so we can point out the pros and cons, and ideally, support this with enthusiasm. But absent answers to those questions, I think it's imperative that we get those as soon as possible. So if we can, perhaps, the purpose of me having that, or asking staff to come up here two weeks ago, was if we can craft a letter to Metro, asking for that clarity, sooner the better. And maybe our H3S staff, Rich and Jill, have answers to those questions, but we still need... I still want to get some clarity on that. It's a big issue, and I think our constituents deserve answers. I do want to thank my colleagues up here, the four of us. Last Thursday... Last Thursday, I viewed a manufactured housing, a new facility, a new home, almost completed. But I want to thank each and every one of you for showing up, to see the quality, and realize that that particular community has a range of age groups in there, children, senior citizens, and so forth, and a very affordable option, but that's not $245,000, or it's actually. Per door, yeah. Yeah, we need to find, and my challenge, and this is my comments yesterday to the Clackamas County Business Alliance, and we had a member of the Housing Home Builders Association there as well, is that we really need to challenge ourselves, jurisdictions and everyone, if this bond is successful, to find a way to build the most amount of units at the most affordable cost, and be responsible stewards of those tax dollars. So I'm looking forward to, hopefully, this thing does pass, and we can actually build the housing for those who genuinely need it, but we need to do it as efficiently as possible. That's what I have for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Savas. Commissioner Schrader.
Alrighty. Well, Monday was a busy day for me. I was down with the Association of Oregon Counties, and I think Ken, you were there too. Basically, I am chairing the Budget Committee, and we're moving, I'm happy to say that the staff has actually pulled together and is restructuring based on the Moss Adams Report, a new budget structure. And we saw the first set of numbers the other day in the context of that structure. And we will be implementing an austerity budget, but it looks as if we are really going to be fine. We won't be filling positions in the next year or so, but we're hopeful that we can build up our reserves and our contingency funds, and get through a legislative session with enough advocacy to have counties heard as policy is being made down there. And I was very pleased and very thankful that the staff was able to pull that together. We're having another budget meeting, oh, within the next two weeks, where we will even further refine those numbers, but we are in the way out of fiscal turbulence at this point, really getting a clear idea of what monies we do have, and working very hard with the committee, with the Budget Committee, to prioritize. And I also want to thank District Eight folks, because when we had our District Eight meeting, which includes Washington, Multnomah, and Clackamas County, everybody was very receptive to what we've been trying to do with this. And I see our larger counties stepping up into leadership, which will be helpful for the statewide organization. So thank you for that. The other thing I wanted to say was that last night, I was at MPAC, and we did do a due pass, you know, conversation with the transportation plan, okay, Regional RTP. So that will go forward to the Metro Council, and that we unanimously decided on an aye vote. We did have one abstention. And largely, that was because our environmental friends have some things that they would like to add, but it was kind of late in the process. So what we've decided to do with that piece is to have those further conversations. What I said last night was, the RTP, as soon as you get one done and approved, you start again, with another three-year cycle. So there is going to be room for having those voices at the table, and if I'm going to be chairing MPAC next year, which it seems as if I will be, I will make sure that that is part of our conversations. The issue is the specificity of what our environmental community wants us to do. I mean, our county develops green, we have, you know, leads to, you know, buildings, we do bioswales, we repair culverts that are fish-friendly, we kind of have an ethos of that. And so the conversation, from my perspective, is going to circle around, how specific do you want to be? Do you want to give various jurisdictions more latitude in how they implement that? Or do you want to be more prescriptive? So to me, that's going to be the crux of the discussion. Anyway, so it was a good discussion last night, and that's not, that's going to continue to kind of happen. I'm trying to think, oh, yesterday, we did meet with our superintendents, and I'll let some of my other colleagues talk about that. It was a very interesting discussion. Also, all of us were at the joint meeting of the BCC and the Arturism Development Council, where they talked about one of my favorite things, which was water recreation, and how we have some of the most pristine parks and waterways here in Clackamas County for people to recreate on and in. So, there we go. All right, let's do the word of the week. All right, and that is palatable, agreeable in taste. Did you know that palatable also means acceptable? In its origin state back to the 17th century, the librarian gave the children two options. If they wanted to remain in the library, the children found neither, neither option very palatable. And now we're going to do arts and culture in the county. Victorian craft demonstration at the McLaughlin House. The ongoing hands-on demonstration series features a variety of Victorian needlework and handwork techniques. Experience for yourself this important aspect of the lives of the ladies in the 1800s. All programs are free of charge. In October, the Victorian handcraft demonstration series will feature half-circle housewives. The ingenious little sewing kit will keep your tools neat and tidy. Saturday, October 13th, from 12 to 3:00, at the McLaughlin House in Oregon City. And now, Lakewood Theater Company presents Frog Town Live. The new high-energy dance party concert takes kids on a musical journey through blues, funk, soul, and pop by Emmy-winning writer-composer Philip Pelletier. In acclaimed celebration of cultural diversity, Frog Town comes alive through riveting live music performances featuring Portland all-stars LaRonda Steele, 2017 Best Female Vocalist, Cascade's Blues Association, acclaimed vocalist Heather Christie, saxophonist Pete Peterson, and Emmy Award-winning writer-composer Philip Pelletier. I hope I'm saying his name correctly.
Pelletier.
Pelletier? Thank you. Saturday, October 13th, at 1:00 p.m. at the Lakewood Center for the Arts in Lake Oswego. And Pippin is still going on at the Lakewood Center, and Clackamas Repertory is deciding on its, for next year, when its, the plays are going to be. So for more information, visit the clackamasartsalliance.org. And, okay, thank you. All right.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Humberston. I always like saying that, because it's kind of fun, given that, you know, it's usually Chair Bernard, but I like, I like saying your name, Chair Humberston.
We need to have him, have Chair Bernard practice.
Yes, yes. So few things that are on the forefront of my mind today. First, I really appreciate Commissioner Savas talking about the metro housing bond, and I do want to encourage all questions that Commissioner Savas has to be answered, because it's very important that all of us enthusiastically support this housing bond measure. From my perspective, what is key with this metro housing bond is that we, at the local level, will be able to determine how to use those resources. And I have every confidence that our board, with the values that we have, with the community stakeholders that we've developed, and the conversations that we have here in Clackamas County, will do much to move the dial in housing people in Clackamas County. Homelessness is a public health crisis. And when we look at the resources that are diverted, whether it's public safety or in our emergency rooms, it is untenable, the situation that we have. And we have to work together to move the dial to address this issue. And we are doing that in this region, and I'm very happy to say that all of my colleagues at the table will be supporting and raising resources for the housing bond, because we know how important it is to help house people in our community. Couple other issues on the forefront of my mind, justice. Justice has been everywhere. When we were looking at the division in our country regarding the appointment of Judge Kavanaugh, or we're looking right here locally with Measure 105, which is an effort to repeal Oregon's sanctuary laws. I just want to mention that Oregon sanctuary law is very old, it's over, I think it's 30 years old, is that right, Chair Humberston?
At least 30.
At least 30 years old. And it was devised to protect people from racial profiling, given the situation that happened in Oregon, where legal residents were targeted and really harassed, discriminated against. And in Oregon, we said, that is not okay. And that was the reason for our sanctuary laws. It really helps to promote justice for everyone, it affects all Oregonians, and that is a really critical piece. So as you are reviewing information about how to vote, really think about the kind of Oregon that we've had, and the kind of Oregon that we want to continue to have. And lastly on my mind, prevention and children. We have had wonderful conversations with all of our superintendents in Clackamas County. There is a roundtable of all of our commissioners, and having conversations about what do kids need, how do we work together, how do we promote better mental health, how do we reduce suicide, how do we promote after-school programs for children? How do we make sure that we have a continuum of workforce that reaches all the way down into middle school, all the way through our community colleges? These conversations are critical. While we all know that resources are important, and that we don't have enough public resources to meet all of the need, where we can really move the dial through conversation and collaboration is by figuring out what can we do best with the resources that we have. We are in depth with those conversations, and I really appreciate my commissioners sitting with me through those meetings, with all of the superintendents, to move the dial on this very important issue. So that's what I have for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Kevin, I was wondering if we can take something out of order? Could we bring up the dog first?
Yes, we can.
We appreciate that. People will understand why after we get done here. Here we go. This is Maribel. She's a two-year-old pit bull boxer who is a sweet girl looking for a moderately active home to call her own. She enjoys leased walks around the neighborhood and sitting in parks for picnics and other relaxing activities. She is also happy to crash at home with you and watch a movie or two. She's a bit shy at first, so please be patient with her as she gets to know you. She would need a home without cats and with kids over 13 years old. She sounds like a match for you, then please go and visit her today. For more information about Maribel and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you, Kevin. If you'll bring up the next item. Thank you. So today, rather than talk about anything that I did all week, and meetings that I attended, what I would like to do today is feature something that I think everybody should know about. Rather than talk about the kinds of stuff we normally do, I want you to take a good look at this picture. Shortly afternoon on Sunday, September 30th, deputies received an urgent call from Clackamas County Center. A week-old infant, Audrey Harmon, had stopped breathing in the portrait studio at J.C. Penney. Deputies Zakari, Olson, and Russell responded, running through the mall to the portrait studio. They found baby Audrey pale and unresponsive. Authorities believe she had choked on fluids. The parents were distraught, the mother had called 911, while the father and a number of Good Samaritans made the first attempts at infant CPR and assisted the parents. Deputies went immediately to work. Deputy Zakari performed chest compressions while Deputy Olson checked the infant's airway with his finger. Deputy Russell stabilized Audrey's head, keeping her neck arched and airway open. Deputy Zakari turned Audrey over on her stomach and performed a burping chest pat to remove fluid from the baby's airway. After he flipped back, Audrey back over, Deputy Russell used a bulbous nose sucker to extract fluid from the infant's nose. Clackamas Fire District Number One paramedics arrived within two minutes later and took over CPR, and baby Audrey was transported to OHSU. This is a photo of the deputies Zakari, Olson, and Russell a week later, when they visited baby Audrey at OHSU. In the media hype of what law enforcement does wrong, we forget how many times they do things to protect and serve our community. Let's all try to keep that in perspective. Thank you, and if there are no other comments, we stand adjourned.